Speaker Derek Gruen. We're ready? I'm gonna call August meeting of the McHenry County Conservation District to order. If anyone would rise to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, or which is stand for the nation's liberty, justice, and freedom.
Thank you. Better off going out, coming back here. Yeah, Megan Wolf Hall.
Trustee Gaden.
Gaden.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Campbell.
Here.
Trustee Thomas.
Here.
Trustee Chris.
Here.
Trustee John.
Here.
Trustee Hennig.
Here.
President's on remotely, so I need a motion on three point two for us to allow build up and remotely. Lynn has the motion, the second. Ray has the second. A roll call.
Trustee Fritz.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Dom.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Gaden.
Yes.
Trustee Hennig.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Both can participate and vote. So Lynn.
You know where they go.
The oldest, like, thing.
Where we go. Why not? Alright, thank you. Conservation ethic, goal number six. To foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens. Helping all of us regardless of the basis of our interest in nature to develop a greater awareness of our role being responsibility for the full community of life. Conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then to act in that nature. A conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of conserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. Goal five.
Sure.
Goal number five. To ensure sufficient integration of key district functions, therefore educational services, site planning, land and facilities management, and natural resource management to maximize the overall effectiveness of the districts.
Thank you.
Ed, can you do the pledge? Conservation stewards chip pledge. We pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, way of life of the Kennedy County. The quality of life in the Kennedy County depends on helping and sustainable natural resources. Thoughtfully develop cities and towns, strong economy, beautiful outdoor places to explore and discover and like. Number three. We will remain steadfast in our commitment to protect the distinct natural areas.
Thank you. With that, I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make that one.
Okay, Linda makes the motion as the second. Ed. Roll call.
Trustee Dom.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Fritz.
Yes.
Trustee Gaden.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas. Yes. Trustee Hennig.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Detective Director Tesler, you are going to talk about team member introductions.
We do, and there are two individual team members that have joined us and with a promotion and one hired from outside. And I'm gonna let their supervisors give a little background about them and if they are on Zoom this evening. So John, if you would please start, the third new member from sites and place.
Sure thing. Thank you. My pleasure to introduce Kyle Ames as a new mechanic two. Kyle came to the Conservation District about eight years ago after having studied auto mechanics at MCC, achieving an associate's degree in that field from MCC. And then he worked at a couple of different locations locally here in auto mechanics at a couple of different shops before coming to the Conservation District. When he came to us as a mechanic one, he was highly recommended by, you know, the places that he worked. And they were very sad seeing him go and it was our catch or our benefit. You know, he has the alphabet soup of credentials behind his name with everything, you know, the ASC items, lots of different things. There's too many to list all of the certifications that he has. In addition to auto mechanics, he has shown that he is very adept at small engine repair and has even taken on our bicycle repair and maintenance for our police department. So he is very, very well liked, very popular among the staff as well as he is very, he's known to be very knowledgeable in diagnostics and figuring out problems for things. So we, as we try to do in, at the district if we can, we try to promote from within. And so a couple of years ago, Perry and I talked about it. We knew that Steve Grover, who is our current mechanic two, was going to be retiring, was going to be retiring. So we set on a course to help Kyle, get him ready, help Steve and Kyle transition into this. So we started teaching him things like, you know, budgeting and, you know, what does it take to manage a fleet? And he stepped up to the plate on that and really hit it out of the park. So with that said, I want to welcome Kyle and excited about his promotion. And so is he out there? I didn't see him on the Zoom. I don't know.
Seen earlier, but that's like.
I don't see.
I did not.
Okay, I didn't see him either, but that's Kyle and perhaps we got our wires crossed and perhaps I'll get to repeat all this another time when he does show, so.
We have the board trustees, thank you for all his work and forward to meeting him at some other time then.
Alright, we will. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Chief King, if you want to introduce our new member of the police department.
Yes, it would be my pleasure. So I'd like to introduce to all of you Dan Xavier. Don't let the spelling of his last name fool you. It's pronounced Xavier. And Dan comes to us most recently from the Crystal Lake Park District where he served as chief of police. Before that, Dan spent about thirty years with the Crystal Lake Police Department, retiring as a division commander. And so with him, Dan brings to us over thirty years of law enforcement experience, including experience at running evidence for an organization, working on accreditation, which I know he loved, and working in administration. So these are some areas that are greatly going to benefit our police department. In addition to that, Dan is a very tactically sound officer. I'm gonna let him tell you about his experience and his specialty areas on the street. But all of this is happening, I'm so excited about Dan as an addition, not only am I, but the rest of the team members are as well. And this is all really happening because of the board and the support that we received from the board to move to accepting lateral transfers as police hires. As you all know, for many years, we struggled with retention. Officers would come to us, they would get trained. We'd invest all of this time and effort and money into training them, putting them through the police academy, getting them all their certifications. And then poof, they leave us for a better paying job somewhere else. So we think we found a little bit of a magic formula here by hiring officers on the latter side of their career instead of the beginning side. It seems to work well for the officers and I know it's working well for the agency. So with that, Dan, can you please tell this board a little bit about who you are as a person, who you are as a professional, and why you chose the Conservation District as your employer?
Yes, absolutely. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright, outstanding. Well, as Chief King has stated, I have a great deal of experience in law enforcement in McHenry County and locally, specifically the city of Crystal Lake for many years, the Crystal Lake Park District. And now having the opportunity to come to work for the Conservation District is, really is a dream come true. Conservation law is always something that interested me the most. Even though over my extensive career, I started in nineteen eighty-seven. I did a wide variety of things from patrol to investigations, to commander of a couple of different divisions, field training officer, I'm a certified motorcycle instructor, a graduate of Northwestern Staff in Command that the Crystal Lake had put me through as well. And but, but most importantly, I've always had that, that love for the outdoors and the ability to combine those two things together now is, really is a dream come true. I'm so happy to be here. This team of officers that I've been introduced to over this past month that I've been here, I couldn't compare to any other department or any other group of officers that I've worked with in my entire career. It's just a great group of people and I've met many of the board members, many of, many more of you I haven't met yet. So I hope to in the future, but please, you know, if you see me out someplace and I haven't met you, I'd love to do so. And I'm here to assist Chief King in any way possible to continue to move this department in the direction that she has set for it. It certainly seems like it's a top notch organization and I'm proud to be part of it. So thank you.
Well, thank you and welcome. We're so happy to have you here. So usually we, you know. It's difficult, but thank you so much for coming to work for us and look forward to seeing you again in that new last week or two ago. And enjoy that and we're forward to seeing you again.
Alright, thanks. Thanks again.
That brings us to trustee report. Everybody have anything to report right now?
Not really. I mean, I think I did get a chance to meet Dan, but just wonderful job. And I know we talked about it last weekend, but the fiftieth celebration was great. So I saw a lot of people working really hard and sites and fleets behind the scenes, getting everything set up. So I thought it was, like I said, we mentioned that last week.
Yeah, it was very good. Any other, you know, that'll bring us to Tony Lea is on the report. Kelly there?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can see you and hear you. Very good.
Good, good. Sorry, I am remote today. I just want to be safe. My son's not feeling real well, so. So first of all, congratulations on the fiftieth anniversary turnout. I think you guys did a wonderful job and there were a lot of people there. It was great and it was a lot of fun. And I now have a goal, I've put it on my calendar, to try to hit every single Conservation District area at some point to check it out and go walking and hiking there. So I'm very excited about that. There's a few things here that I wanted to update you on from the board. I don't know if you were aware, you probably were, but there is a state grant program that's part of the American Rescue Plan that's for tourism attractions and festival grants. And this program is awarding anywhere between ten thousand to one million dollars. So there's a webinar on the, link on the resume McHenry County email. So you guys could look at that. And if you don't have it, just let me know. I will forward it. I think Elizabeth forwards it too. So September thirtieth, we're going to have our yearly finance meeting that's pertaining to our, the county's annual budget. So all the board members will be able to sit down and hear about the budget and discuss it. We did this one time before and it was really helpful for a lot of the people who didn't really know much about budgeting so they could learn the process. So if anybody's interested, that's September thirtieth at one, one o'clock at the county administrative building. In case you weren't aware, the third zoning meeting for the Duke Energy Solar Farm is September ninth at one thirty. And that's at the county administrative building. And then I want to congratulate trustee Dom on his appointment to the Hebron Rainage District. That just happened at our board meeting last Tuesday. There, the census numbers were released and it looks like the county is going to keep the original nine districts that had been proposed by the consultant. So that we have to vote on by November, December, and it looks like we don't have to do any more work on it because we're gonna keep that. If anybody wants to see the map, you can go to the county website or I can email it to you also. We also, the county signed a contract with Bronner Group for consulting services to help us manage the American Rescue Plan funds. So they are going to create a portal for the county. So people who want to apply for those American Rescue Plan funds will apply through the portal. Prior to that, the county board is going to, with help from the administration, gonna set a goal of what percentage of funds are going to various types of entities, whether it's nonprofit or businesses, Conservation District, things like that. And then there'll be a portal set up. So once that's up and ready, I will email that to you guys because I know there's some requests that you guys are putting in. And then one other thing, we just passed a resolution last Tuesday authorizing our county to participate in the ComEd Green Region Program. I can't read my writing, for Windchained Cove Pollinator Habitat Restoration Project. So I'm excited the county is actually working on pollinator restorations. Anyway, that's all I have. If anybody has any questions, you know how to reach me. Thanks.
Thank you. Everybody have any questions to Kelly right now? Alright. Thank you, Kelly. Okay, that brings us to my report. My report last month, right? How long's the best we went over Lake County? Was that before last one's meeting or this one's meeting?
I think it was in between. I think I called it right.
Anyway, we did go to Lake County, Liz and I sat in with their, well, meeting that they put on, that they were trying to increase, or get legislation passed that could increase their PTEL limit. I think I did. But anyway, so we did that. Today.
Report, your force.
Your force. They, of course, there's, what, five or four of us? And at the joint bioreactor, they're out in the field. It was very good, well attended. Program was excellent and everyone staying around afterwards having great discussions. I think we can prove it, we can get more done working together than part. I think the founder will also support it and that back to them that's stepped up and very good. I thought we did a really nice job. A shout out to Gary and to Brad for their contribution to the whole project. I don't, I don't think I have anything else, but I'm. Alright, public comments, one. Yeah. Do you have anybody who would like to make a comment up there?
John, I would like, I'd like my comment.
Go ahead, Vern. I can't see you. Oh, now I can see you.
Okay, thank you. I've been asked to speak on this subject tonight, which I know the board has spent a lot of time and is very concerned about. The issue is the Brookdale multi-use trail. It was originally thought of back in the twenty thirteen to twenty fifteen. And we were made aware in twenty fourteen, fifteen that there was an issue of a neighbor shooting into district property. When I joined the board, it was brought to the district's attention again in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, which led to litigation. And the original trail was rerouted to keep the public at a safe distance from the shooter's home. The district went to court, as I said, in twenty twenty and was awarded injunction by the shooter not to shoot on his property into the district property anymore. In early July of this year, I was informed by a organization called CMO. It's a horse organization that was planning an event at the Brookdale site. It was told that their original date would have to be pushed three to four weeks because of a problem with a neighbor shooting. It was subsequently informed by the same organization that the trail would be closed for the, to the public for the remainder of twenty twenty-one and their event would have to be moved to Rush Creek. I spoke with Director Kramer, who informed me that the area needed to be, that the, I'm sorry, that the district needed to take this action to keep the public safe. From November first through mid-January, the hunting program is also held at this site and utilizes a site. And part of it is in the area that the horse trail is in and, and basically a lot of these areas where horse trail is located. I've been asked if hunting is allowed, why would the district not allow horse and walkers to utilize the same area where it is safe to hunt, ride, and walk? A side note, Brookdale, we've been trying to make sure that people are aware of its, what it does for us from both the hunting, riding, and walking walkers. And from the riding or horse organization, we've had more people go out to that site because of the enhanced loop that we put in two years ago. And people were really getting into the swing of this is a great place to go after work in the, in the week and have a nice two hour ride with their horse before it gets dark. And so I got a lot of calls when the trail was closed saying, what's going on Vern? Why are they closing the trail? What's happening? And I, I basically said at this point, I really couldn't discuss it. So I really asked the board to consider, again, public safety, both hunters, riders, and walkers. And if we close it to one group of people, I hope we take that same safety precaution with all groups of people who use it. And again, I hope you're successful in getting this issue resolved and having that site open. The horse community, you know, raised the seed money for the RTP grant and we spent over a hundred thousand dollars on the parking lot alone, let alone the trail and the amenities along the way. Or I'm sorry, two, two hundred thousand. I take that back. It keeps on, I can't believe it's that much money, but it was. So please consider this. If the horse community or any other organization can be of assistance, do not hesitate to contact us. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Vern. We haven't had to make a decision on the hunt group, hunting group yet and we really hope that we will be able to be open before then to them. And I hope, I really hope we're not closed for the year of the, of the summertime and fall season. But we don't know how this will turn out at this point in time. We are extremely disappointed also that we are not able to open that loop up to anybody that wants to use it. It's unfortunate that we've lost the use of key property to us by just a few citizens. So that being said, is there anyone else out there that would like to speak? Have you seen anybody else? Not, no. Okay, well, that being said, thank you very much and we will continue to, we of course always keep everyone's safety as our, as our forefront and some main concern. And then after that, we invite everybody to our, our properties and want them, like, always. So, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay. Linda.
Yes.
That brings us to the consent agenda. Would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion.
Oh, second that.
Oh, you have to let her read it first.
Can I take this off? Anybody care?
It's okay with me.
Okay. Twelve point one, approval minutes of previous meetings. Twelve point one A, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Twelve point one B, July twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Regular meeting. Twelve point one C, May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, how meeting executive session. Twelve point two, acceptance of treasurer's report. Twelve point two A, acceptance of the treasurer's report for library twenty twenty-one as presented. Twelve point three, resolution number twenty-one dash sixty-two, a resolution authorizing the release of the listed executive session meeting minutes to the public domain in compliance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Twelve point four, resolution number twenty-one dash sixty-three, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute an Illinois bicycle program grant agreement with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources for the Prairie Trail Reservations of Stormwater Management Improvement South of Barnard Middle Road in Franklin, Illinois. Twelve point five, resolution number twenty-one dash sixty-four, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute the contract with Petrow Choice of Allen, Illinois, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder for unleaded and diesel fuels. Plus point three cents per gallon over market price the day that the list of the record period of one year starting September first, twenty twenty-one and ending August three first, twenty twenty-two. Do I need the bid number? Okay. Twelve point six, resolution number twenty-one dash sixty-five, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute the contract with American Gas Propane of Corney, Illinois, the lowest and responsible, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder for the purchase of propane fuel at a cost not to exceed one point five two cents per gallon for a period of one year starting September first, twenty twenty-one and ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Twelve point seven, resolution number twenty-one dash sixty-six, a resolution authorizing travel expenditures for the International Association of Chiefs of Police, twenty twenty-one, conference and exhibition, September eleventh through the fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, as included with the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget for a total cost not to exceed one thousand five hundred dollars. Twelve point eight, resolution number twenty-one dash sixty-seven, a resolution authorizing the purchase of one replacement vehicle directly of the Illinois State Purchase Contract number twenty-one dash four one six CMS dash BOSS four dash B dash two one one four three for a total cost not to exceed thirty-three thousand dollars. Twelve point nine, resolution number twenty-one dash sixty-eight, a resolution accepting regenerating ecological function. A roadmap for McHenry County Conservation District's farm management system reported estimated by the Library Prairie Foundation through the Food Land Opportunity Grant. Twelve point ten, resolution number twenty-one dash sixty-nine, a resolution supporting the McHenry County Conservation Foundation entering into a grant agreement with the Community Foundation for McHenry County in support of Prairie Trail improvements. Twelve point eleven, resolution number twenty-one dash seventy, a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, Illinois Habitat Fund to assist in funding of the Pleasant Valley Conservation Area Restoration Project for the month for an amount of thirty-six thousand six hundred and thirty. Twelve point one two, resolution number twenty-one dash seventy-one, a resolution applying to the Board of Directors of McHenry County Conservation District Foundation for a three-year term beginning September first, twenty twenty-one to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Twelve point one three, resolution number twenty-one dash seventy-two, a resolution authorizing the payment to McHenry County Collector and McHenry County Treasurer for the twenty twenty-one second installment of property taxes in the amount not to exceed eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-one and oh three cents.
Thank you. Now, Chris, would you like to ring a second?
No, I can second you.
Yes, for the second. Chris, roll call please.
Trustee Gaden.
Yes.
Trustee Fritz.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Miss, yes. Trustee Dom.
Yeah, yeah.
Trustee Hennig.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. And these two others, board business. Google bills, table for multiple point one on treasures, internal audit. Lynn, do you have any to pull on here? Usually Dave did. So did anybody pull any?
Did I do this one this time? You know, I looked at it. I don't know what numbers you want me to, I mean, I don't know, you know, you say number, I don't.
I see, that's the vendor number.
You want the vendor number? Well, I didn't pull it, but.
Oh, that's, well, they should be able to figure that out. So vendor number, so like, I was going to do, right. So the, it seems like the vendor numbers, the letter starts with the first letter of the firm's name. And then, then you would just say name of.
Okay.
So if you don't have the vendor number, I'm sure they.
You just, you can back to the individual vendor.
You just, you can back to the individual vendor, you know, ex name, whoever they are for the amount, and we'll look it up. Well, there was one to
I have it here, so I can might.
Grazley Feed or Roanoke Food.
Oh, okay.
Grazley? Yeah. Was I looking at the right one?
Well, there were a couple for Roanoke Food, I saw that, but I don't have one for Grazley. Is that the name that was in the company?
Grazley Feed. When I was looking at that, I was looking for that. There's Roanoke Food.
I guess I have one for Roanoke Food, I don't remember the name, but that's, I have that one.
What did he with that one? We all said one.
So I had one for Countrywell and Pump Incorporated. A vendor number C, one eight four three, in the amount of nineteen eighty, one thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars.
They wouldn't pull one. I got Salsa Labs. S eight seventy three. Give us three of them. Is that what we need?
Yeah.
We're good?
I do have a question from last time, and I don't hope anybody's never answered it, so I think we'll have to ask. When we pulled the one for Kimball Midwest, the description is terminal. N D S N three one, three three one, terminal, and it's a unit price. And I guess I'm really not completely sure what the, all three are what that means. Right? So there's a number and then it says terminal and it's somebody at Quandie or nor, you know, they're like eighty five cents a piece. So I'm just not quite sure what that. It's one of those things where you pull it.
We get stuff from them, we get stuff from them, and it might be like terminals for like, or like you crimp on the end of a wire or something.
Sure.
That's what it is.
Sure.
The front is a terminal.
No. No, not the terminal. I'm not, I'm like thinking, what, I'm not.
Spade terminal or a loop or.
It's a terminal or those on like something like that.
Okay, so that's good. So I figured if we're gonna pull these, we're gonna look at them and then if you have questions, we should ask, so.
Well, that's.
Question on that one. All right, thank you. All right, so then we're done with that. I can make a motion. You know, I'm thirty, thirteen point one B, I don't see the one for Concert.
William Eisen from Concert this morning.
Andy, was there anything on the additional bills that came out? For Concert FS? No, there was.
I don't believe there was, no.
I see it, so I wasn't sure, maybe I missed it.
Bad one for us.
Yeah.
All right. I'm gonna, I won't worry about that one. I'll go to, I'll move for consideration to approve the payments of the balance of bills as we begin the submission of bills pending report for the month ending July thirty one, twenty twenty one.
Is there a second? Yep, second's a motion. Need a special on the bills. Not a roll call, please.
Trusty Thomas?
Yes.
Trusty Campbell?
Yes.
Trusty Gaten?
Yes.
Trusty Cook?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Trusty Fritz?
Yes.
Trusty Honey?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Executive.
All right, so legislative update. We had a really good legislative connection day today. We had Underwood's office present and we also then have the Lieutenant General, Governor, Lieutenant Governor's staff was present there for the, the connected piece for the bioreactor. We also then had Senator Wolfpack's office and Representative Wright and Representative Weber. So definitely a great job there to connect and make, um, talk about them with our stories. We've also been having some great running just prepping up for Senator Wolfpacks and Underwood's office. And to sit down with them as we work towards the tourism grant that we talked about last week. That would be really important for them because that funding gets distributed out of Underwood's office and past his office. So setting the follow up there so that we can get a win rate and get their support on that as well as our, our local legislators. We are, which I mentioned later in the meeting, that there is an Illinois Association of Conservation Forests with District meeting late this week on Thursday. We will be talking about legislative program for the upcoming year. Many of the entities are looking to referendum. You know, Lake County is looking to put a change into their legislative rate under the Downstate Forests Preserve District Act. We're also talking about drone legislation, some changes because of adverse impacts to natural areas and wildlife. And so that'll be a discussion point for us to see how we're. I also know there was a conversation today with Representative Wright on the recreational access and the liabilities that are associated with that so that paddlers would have the protections or pride of landowners. When paddling goes through on their property, those protections can be extended similar that are already provided for those if they're hunting or if there's snowmobbing or horseback ride. So that was a conversation and Representative Wright seemed very interested in helping to take a lead on that piece of legislation. So that's what I have on that. The fifty anniversary, we were all there, a great, again, shout out to the entire team. Marketing and education, they took on that extra effort, you know, celebrating the fifty anniversary with all the different events and activities and promos that went on. They did a great job, but they were also then backed up by many of the other divisions that were out there as well. I appreciate everyone spending time out there. The landscape is out for the fall and, you know, we're, we're teeing up, the kids are back in school and so there's a lot of activities and we just think I'm pretty surprised going forward. That's, that's all I have.
Okay, oh, and a board member, Ron Burden, is there also?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. That brings us to that brings us to all of the reports. So many, what any conferences or meetings that I'm under this list, anybody have anything to report there? All right. I'm gonna go on to Fox River. Lynn, are you still?
Yeah, I'm doing, yeah, I'm still working with that group. So last month, we are, I don't know, this month, I think, yeah, it was this month, we met with McHenry Township for their roadside habitat program, took us out, did an an in-person presentation on kind of where they're at, what kind of successes and some failures that they've had with that program and how they're trying to work through that. And then we went on a road trip and see a couple of different sites. It, it's clear that very active management upfront is really the answer to make these things work. I think that they were struggling a little bit. But not for lack of trying. And so I think that it was a, the defenders were also there and a lot of people from different groups were all there trying to give advice and just kind of make it, try to make this thing work going forward. That was that this month. Next month, they're doing a singing insects program. So I can mix it up with some things. That's in September, September eighth on a Wednesday. Actually, our ecosystem dot org has the link. It's, it's in person. I, that's gonna start getting inky going forward. But right now it's scheduled to be at the Creek Fund Nature Center and that's from one to thirty.
Thank you. Fishwater River Ecosystem Partnership.
Dave.
Dave always did that before. Is there anybody interested in, often do they meet? Is it once a month or are they? Or is it, do you remember how often they meet?
They, I thought monthly or at least every other month. But I usually get the prep, you know, email if there isn't any plan. John, I know, I remember you're still on the mailing list too.
Yeah, I do get their mailing. I, I'd say in the last eight months, they've probably met five or six times at the most.
Is there anybody interested in going to that one right now? They'd like to do that one? Very good, thank you. Elizabeth and John can give you up the speed on that one. Fishwater Wilderness, Elizabeth, do you have any report there?
The only piece that, two things, the culture survey is still open until September tenth, so we're pushing that out. We're doing a great response. And it'll be great to get a regional pulse of where we're at and assisting with our DEI group. The other thing, working with the Field Museum with all the goals, we've been working on developing measurement and metrics that is called a hub. And so all the data that will be geographically, like, you know, with Cindy Rennel, with Desert PIS and spatial work, this will be a four state region that'll have all the data and measurement on, on our seven goals. So we're getting ready to bring that forward next week to our steering committee and then like looking that out for public viewing. I would say probably within the next thirty to forty five days. So that is really exciting and I think it will allow those that are unfamiliar or needing to look at things through visual graphics and data to see, you know, just the whole area by a map basis. I think will be really helpful to. So again, that's been led by the Field Museum. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Pat from Gero.
We had a, actually, our annual meeting and then February meeting. Talked, of course, about the field day, which was today. The other was the Greenwich District. There's one, I think, in Hutton they're trying to get together.
I'm sure there is.
And then, of course, we're neutral on that here. The other thing, of course, they're still talking about the impact on the solar farm.
You got it. They come in, they still kind of neutral on that also, or where do you think they're going with that?
Who do you find zero?
Yeah.
I guess if you're a landlord, it's okay, but they're they're not really taking much, I don't think they're taking much of a stand.
They're gonna, they're gonna let each, each member find their own right to their property.
Yeah.
You got people on both sides.
Yeah.
Well, they did a lovely job. I know wonderful job today and it was very generous with the food truck and everything else that they put forward. So it was a amazing stay.
Oh, thanks to everybody, the upper down, like, all.
I called, I called, I called Dan after I got home, I said, gotta go, man.
Which the food truck was pretty good.
I was focused.
Focused, yeah.
That truck was very good. This is very hard for me to get food and I got my own personalized pizza.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it was, it was excellent.
He does a nice job. The whole day, all the way around, this is great.
What was it called again? Cause I wanted to.
That was called Fire, Kiss by Fire.
Oh, Fire.
Kiss by Fire. Fire by Kiss, Kiss by Fire.
Good, yeah.
Okay. Next one we have, no one, I A C F D and I A D and NRPA, so who do you want to call for the meeting?
Each one meets differently. I A D meets like three times a year. Well, that's the Illinois Association of Conservation Forests Preserve District, three times a year. One at the conference, one at the spring legislative session down in Springfield, and the other summer meeting, which again is this Thursday in Naperville. I think that I sent that out to Ben, who wants to attend that one. Usually we're talking legislative issues, but we're all working with forest conservation districts. That's really what the focus of that is. The NRPA, they have their conference the twenty first through the twenty third, so I will be attending that. There are all sorts of virtual options for anyone that still wants to attend. That is, that is going on. And then the I A D, there is the best of the best award ceremony that will be taking place on October fifteenth. I'll send information out and you'll be recognized for our fiftieth anniversary. And the team went to the league, Shawna, Brad, Dave, they submitted, we have two award applications, one on the bioreactor project under green practices. I think that's a great award winner as well as the Lapota partnership to acquire that property with all the partners in there. So we think those are two award winning ones to receive them that. And so that's a dinner and so we'll, we'll see if that's who wants to attend that event. The other thing on Thursday this week, and I just want to give a shout out to our staff that have been very involved with the Illinois Park and Recreation Association. We've got a handful of team members that have stepped up to leadership. And this Thursday, if the board of directors approves it, we will have our first permanent conservation section with all of the other protected areas. So we'll have a place and that provides ongoing professional development, continuing education for those that are serving in our spaces, which is very exciting. And I want to give a shout out to Jenny Kider. She's been leading the learning labs. And that's the first group in the unit session. I believe Becky Youpen, who's doing our monitoring, she's been leading the group and then working on field tours. And just a lot of great leadership development that our staff have taken. So very proud of their work and their contributions.
Okay, I think on that one, thank you. On that one, I think we'll just, we can keep sending out when there's a meeting, let's see if we've been anywhere. And foundation.
Yeah. No, I was just trying to get into my calendar to tell you when we're meeting next and we're meeting September seventh, which is different. Because we're, we are meeting on the fourteenth and the sixteenth, is that correct? Okay, so yes, well, September seventh reserve is the next meeting.
Okay, and so has there been any discussion when our board would like to meet with their board?
None at all. I mean, they do want to, but they haven't. There's more being said.
Have you talked to Shawna at all about a date, dates?
Yeah, so I think, and Shawna's online here too with that, the, the key piece that we really think is important is we have the MOU. And that needs to come forward, again, unless the MOU expires and then there's just a gap, but just to keep this that conversation. So ideally in the first couple of weeks of September prior to our next meeting, that would be ideal, but I understand it's in time. So Shawna, did you have dates from the foundation board?
So we hadn't set any dates at all because we were waiting to hear back from the district board because we knew that a number of you will probably be beginning to harvest and figured that you were a bit more tied up than our board. But September was a month that everybody agreed upon, as long as that worked for your team.
So rather than later, that looks to me, beans are starting to change already and I actually pulled some corn that's standing, so it's all coming pretty fast with stage one like this. I was almost wondering if there's anything we can do on September seventh, but we I don't know how long the meetings go, if it's anything you can do beforehand or after we're done or something.
They take, they, no.
What time do they start normally?
Six thirty. So potentially before.
Is there something, could we get together at five, five thirty? That's our normal start time anyway. Is it something we could do in an hour, hour and a half?
Yeah, I think in Shawna, I think that's a great idea, maybe, again, I don't know everybody, some individuals work full time, they all do. But wondering if we could split it and get there early and then kind of devote, unless you had specific actionable items. I know they wanted to specifically look at the MOU too, but maybe we just do it together.
Yeah, I think everybody on the foundation board would be amicable to that. I can, as soon as this meeting ends, reach out and just make sure. I can think of one board member, Vice President Ivors, who may not be able to make it early just because he commutes in from Milwaukee, but otherwise we can probably at least get a quorum in attendance.
Participate by Zunlai's driving. I know, you know, at least listen in or that maybe too.
Well, if we have a problem, then we can pick a different day. And if it worked for everybody, I thought that would save them one night and yeah, if that doesn't work, then somewhere in that first couple of weeks of September will be best. For me anyway, I don't know about everybody else.
Yes, me too. I'm after, after mid-September, not great. I'm gone. So let's see if we can try to aim for Shawna, maybe like a five o'clock and combining.
But they have a couple of board members that can't make it. I prefer to make it
Move it later.
So they can get, or maybe they can move their, their meeting back fifteen minutes or half an hour and but it only makes one night for you instead of two.
That is true.
So it's
I would rather do that.
There's some give and take there.
That sounds agreeable, Shawna?
Yeah, I'll reach out to everybody and I'll CC you, Elizabeth, and we'll keep you in the loop.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna zoom in on.
Yeah, two, both holes.
Goodness, yeah.
I'm hoping we can all get together. That, I really want to. I'm hoping we can all get together. That I really want to get a.
What else would it call it?
They're saying seven.
Seven. Only seven.
And their meeting starts at six thirty, so it would be before that, right?
Well, we'll see. But if that works for them, fine. And if all everybody goes home and checks their calendars and something doesn't work. But Elizabeth's no way away, so we won't schedule something that we can't. Okay.
Before we move off of um foundation, can I just make one up or one observation, I guess? Um I don't know how often and I I'd imagine you're probably there most of the meetings, but and for example, if I can't make a meeting, I don't really know that many, it's all that much. I mean, it's a great group, but me not making it may never matter. Um. Do we have anything in place? I mean, I think it would be nice to have somebody at the foundation and and events at some time. I'm typically always there. Either uh, yeah, I've been there. No, I think I think you are. I'm not saying that you haven't been. I'm saying that if there's an opportunity, if there's a time you can't be, maybe there's an alternative. Alternative that can go just to be here.
Sure.
You know what I'm saying?
Well, give me a call. I mean, I really need it. I'd like to go to one of the meetings anyway, so.
So have yeah, that's my alternative.
You know, they they prefer not to have me call them. Uh they'd rather everyone but but I could do that. I I've been meaning to go to one of the meetings anyway, so if someone doesn't make one, I could do that. Or if I can't, I'll call you or somebody else. Yeah, we want to have somebody there. But I we've been well represented for certain times. So I think we didn't have one, you didn't make me call Dave and me.
He went. Yeah.
Yep. Wow, wow. Continue to foster that relationship. That's been great. That's a good point. You know. Okay, that brings us to the project.
Um they were supposed to have their outing um. Coming up and uh for this month and they are postponing it. Uh possibly till September. That was for the. Um that was at the yacht club.
That was that was postponed?
That one's postponed. Uh being nervous about an indoor event, it's pointing at that many people because that can draw a lot of people.
Hmm.
That people are meeting. So uh that one isn't here at this point.
Things don't seem to be getting better though, don't they?
I don't think the further we go out, it's going to get better.
No, I don't think postponing anything helps.
But um so that's where that seems. Oh, and then um. And the reason I just did bring this is I happen to be on that committee at the moment anyway, so it's just an easy um passing along of information. Um this month uh there uh last this. September and in August, it was uh monarchs and margaritas. I think they're the world um attended and people enjoying themselves. On this time, again, it's the first Wednesday of every month. It's from five to seven. It's a hybrid event. Hopefully it stays hybrid, but I don't know. Um it's always at these ale houses in Crystal Lake, but the in person, either way, you have to register. So. Um and Deuce is capping out at thirty for that room so that everybody can be comfortable. Um but either way, if you can go ahead and um register, this time we're um going to be hearing from John Scott. He's a chemist. Um with the Illinois Sustainable Technology Center at the University of Illinois Urbana. And he's been presenting on um. Microplastics in the in the water, in water. And. And giving us update on moving the waters and their own scale with that issue. So again, he says that the um. Presentation itself doesn't start till six, so if you're in person. Um. We're a little late.
Usually won't do it till thirty spots or?
We did this last time, yeah. And we and was kind of getting like, we're not sure what's going to happen if people just don't realize that and they show up. Um because that the chef and owner of these is just really trying to keep it moving to that. Um and it's not the biggest room, but uh we do have some of our the people on Zoom that they're just not going to come. And so this. The whole purpose of trying to keep it hydrated, so they would still feel welcome to come, you know, attend the program. So. And that's only the second time we've done it, so we'll.
John, you're out there. Are you still meeting with Bicycle Pedestrian Plan?
Yes, that group uh did have a meeting. Um they reported that the uh the they continue to make progress on the. On the um the plan itself. Um they're still targeting a fall completion. Um you know, but they're. They're kind of uh right now in the phase of putting all of the information they've gathered over the last nine months, uh eight months into uh into a plan. So that's where they are with that. Uh there was um the individual that is the president of Cycling Without Age. Reported that um they they can't keep up with the demand uh for uh individuals that want uh rides. They are going now mostly to um uh senior centers and things like that and providing lots of opportunities. He said they they've done over uh two hundred and fifty rides as of as of uh, you know. He said he expects to do another hundred uh before or maybe even a hundred and fifty before. But it's very, very popular. He he described one situation that I thought I would share with the board and that was. That when they pull into Valley High, um the the county home there. Um he said the 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 individuals in wheelchairs are just lined up waiting for the ride. He said, we'll stay there for two, three hours. Giving people rides. So um it's working out quite well. Um and uh he is very. Uh he's stunned at the outpouring of support that they've done, including what we've done uh in terms of allowing them to house uh the units uh in Glacial Park. So. Wanted to express thank you on that, so.
You, how how many units do they have?
They have two bikes and recently purchased a trailer. Uh so their target was um ultimately, they were hoping to get four bikes. And they have the demand for it. Um and they're working on raising the funds. A year and a half ago, when they embarked on this, they they didn't have any idea what kind of money they would need. Now they have a pretty good idea that. You know, about ten thousand dollars buys a a bike and or a tri-shaw, tri-shaw and and a small trailer. Um and they're working toward that that goal.
Yeah, I I I know I always complain, but my husband dr- drives the bike for that and he also helps with navigating. And it is amazing, the the people that are are getting these rigs. Um he did one yesterday where one gentleman got up and waited in line to get on again.
Yeah.
And he he sat there and he waited and he at very last, it was only one person that was going to go on, so he was able to get that on. And then there's another, and I won't get into too much detail, but there was one place where they hacked above the hill. And uh and so there's one down and the woman who was on the front turned around and says, would it help if I pushed? So it's it's just, I think it's as much fun for him. As the people that are on that ride. So I I don't know. It's a great program. It's it's wonderful that we're that we can be part of it, I guess. So. The district, so.
How long is the ride?
They they um they're about fifteen to twenty minutes depending where they are. There's one place um off of Philside where that's the use of our trail. Otherwise, you know, depending on where they're located, they might have to be just within the neighborhood. A valley high is really just within the parking lot. You can't really get out of the roads around valley high. Um and um. They've gone out and mapped. Little routes that they can go on. And so one neighborhood, um I think it's Sunrise and Crystal Lake. They just have to keep going around this one neighborhood a couple of times. It's still a bit. But well, fifteen, twenty minutes depending.
Thank you. Hey, thanks, John. Uh this is McHenry County.
Next board meeting is September second at three P M.
Off of any.
Any monthly.
Okay. Or any other outreach contacts? You know, anything else?
I said a few updates here that I didn't do. So um as far as outreach, uh at our last meeting, uh we've had some discussion on snowmobiling and dog parks and um. Individual requests, et cetera. And so I did follow back up with everybody that happened with our correspondence that went out. Um we did get response back um from the Snowmobile Association and the force disappointed, but ultimately understood. Um did get a new request come in though on snowmobiling, uh that hasn't been brought forward yet. And uh they're looking for. Again, similar out in the Ringo area. Uh it came through um our site supervisor. And it really staff is challenged with the time and effort to put into reviewing this to turn something on, but it does through the process through and everything else is out there. So that request came. Um and then also for the dog park, uh dog off leash, um uh. The individual there is going to come back and had a request to like to make a presentation to the board. Um what I followed up with is that Norman's public comment uh would be minimal. We do that twice a meeting every week. Uh and that would be the place to do that unless the board was to want to engage. A full presentation by a group. Generally, we ask that they submit it, we review it and but that would be to the, you know, to the decision of the board. So. Let me know how you'd like.
Um it'd be great if they presented some something first, but then uh. After your review, we'd be, I'm sure we'd be able to listen. To it. I I hate it. Our our comment section's only three minutes, so they want a little bit longer than we can try and. I don't want to help with. Whatever.
Could it still be handled in public comments because there's a lot of.
We can do that, yeah.
This is worse better than good as a.
Either way, either way. I mean, we're not gonna we're not gonna take any action that night. We'll just let them take their presentation and then we'll we'll. Put it on an agenda somewhere where we uh feel appropriate with anything needs to happen. So find nobody else. Hey.
Can I ask a question on something you just sent off? Cause we talk about staff and something comes in for a review on a on a. Snowmobile path. At this point. Are we really in a position to, I mean, I guess I don't know how much time it takes staff for you guys and get everything together. So that we can make the decision that we know we're not going to be able to move forward on anything at this point in speed capacity. It it is a challenge. So in essence, I think we have to put it not on the priorities. There's other things that are armed and do and alignment. And. Again, that process when we go to a plan, we have to go back and say, is there a master plan? And this is just a process. Again, the change can happen, but then we have to work on something else and. I I don't say it is to try to put a lot of red tape into things, but I think there is some fighting through. Efforts that we go through for good management decisions and staff capacity and budgeting and everything else. And so we've got. Some big things that we're trying to address, structures being removed. Um obviously, a a big multimillion dollar investment to our our prairie system. And so then these other items that just come. Great ideas, but where do they fall in in alignment? And I really think it would be helpful. Um to get some support, I guess, to say, you know, thank you. Not now, but we'll put it here and then we'll get back to this tonight for minutes. And 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 again, it's not, there is a science behind through all the departments. Cause as soon as I send something out, they have to go and equal all the data on, you know, soils and and the specific mapping and then that gets them off task of the other pieces. So.
Well, where I'm at on the dog. Dog off leeches. We're getting into the fall. It's not going to happen before fall or winter. I don't care when it happens, the next several months and does not. Or send the snowmobile. It's not going to happen for this winter. So. To me, anything that everyone wants to bring forth, it almost needs to be brought in two, three seasons before it's. Going to happen. So your staff, maybe four seasons. I don't know. Maybe maybe the snowmobile has to be this winter or probably the next winter. I don't want your staff to have to drop whatever it is they're doing to take anything on. I just want to be uh. Helpful to these organizations during the uh time uh time in there that works for us and for them. I realize that most people come to us and live or stations and might be good on something that way. But we also, this board realizes that. Everybody here is fully employed. We're not hoping for something to just drop in the lap. So, you know, as as time allows.
So that does that require a position on that part? Like any requests coming in? I mean, I guess I don't know. So I I hear what you're saying. We're really not going to get to it anyway, but it's if the the we need to have a position by the board that says. And we really can't entertain these right now. We don't, you know, any requests coming in, I mean, we can't all, I don't know.
I don't know. You make a blanket statement.
I was just gonna say a blanket. I don't think you could do because it might be a small, just a little.
Something might be a decision. Something like.
That we can say, yeah, that'll work.
Somebody could be, yeah, well, easily move something that's very large. It might take a year and a half for us to look at. Over we over we need a blanket statement.
Yeah, new trail system is a is a whole new master plan. We've we've got trying to why we go that approach, right? And so. To me, that that's a given science that we do. So doing something different is against our policy and we would need to, so I'm trying to align things with what's a policy piece. Um I think getting a new area and I believe on the dog park, I believe. We address the concerns by deep conversation, out of fairness, individual needs to come forth and and make sure that what his thoughts were were fully expressed.
Sure.
In his voice. And I and I respect that. I think that's really important. Then the board, based on what you hear. Is it going to change your perspective? Because I think we covered that as a staff of resources and our research, but but again. Like that process for it to swing through the board level, that's different than staff assignment to go and do work in character, right?
Right.
John, could I make a comment?
Haven't heard from you yet tonight.
Yeah, well, my voice isn't that good, but this whole um, you know, this is an area of communication. And maybe through social media or through the landscapes or through other, some other medium. You raise the process of, okay, if uh if we get a request from the public. Uh this is in general uh how they're handled and it takes time. So we are sympathetic and we're open to requests, but uh you know, we don't drop everything and. And uh sort of start um and this and your request doesn't take precedence over. You know, the work that's already going on. So, I mean, you don't want to turn people off. But at the same time, you can use it as an educational thing about, well, okay, if you want to. Uh have if you have a use for this area, then we have to uh study that area from the point of view of wet wetlands and. And other uses and uh native plants and animals. And and so then the public maybe gets a better sense of uh. Uh the complexity uh that the that the staff have to deal with. Um you know, rather than just. Turning them away, you you sort of say, well, think about this and uh. You know, we're going to get to your request, but it's not going to be tomorrow. Thank you.
Well, Bill, thank you. Thank you for that message. Anyone that comes in, uh yeah, we can we can do our best to work with them. Thank you.
That was good. And then I also believe uh John is Kyle Ames. He did join us here. So if there's a moment.
Oh, certainly. Yeah.
Yeah, Ky- I think Kyle is uh is on now. Um Kyle, you missed all the nice, wonderful things I had about you before, so.
Sorry about that.
No, no worries.
Uh.
Uh yeah, if you want to uh uh go ahead, uh the board welcomed you, but I'll let you say a few words if you'd like to.
Okay, um my name's Kyle Ames. Uh I've been here seven years. I'm really excited to take the head mechanic position. Um currently, we're looking for. Um someone to replace my current position, so. It looks like we have a good a good person to help me out, so. That's going to be coming up soon.
Well, well, thank you, Kyle, for all your work. And uh certainly a good mechanic uh really makes a place run well and it's and saves a. Organization a lot of money if you have a good mechanic to be able to fix whatever everybody else messes up.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the kind words.
Thank you.
And then the other last announcement, I did pass this up. I just I wanted to just a moment to share with everybody um. A recent uh announcement that we had a former employee who passed away, who was our district's first uh natural resources manager, Alwin Shu. And so uh. Spent uh many years with the district and she actually was in the department was the unit and worked side by side with the N E C members that are still with us. Um that's a loss for the preservation.
And also. Okay, then uh I'm open for public comments too. Any more comments out there?
We do have one.
Okay.
Donna O'Brien.
Hey, welcome to Donna. Um she did a. Uh she's muted right now, I can see. Now she's on. Okay, go ahead. Donna O'Brien. Are you there? Now you're muted again. Now you're not. There's no video that's audio.
Donna, can you hear us?
Now, now I can. Now, now I can. I can hear her now.
No, I can't.
Now I can't.
I don't hear her, her hand's up, and she's unmuted.
No video.
Okay, I'm concerned about the Brookdale. Closing. Is there anything that can happen to. Open up the trails again for the horses?
Were, did you listen to our conversation earlier in the evening?
I'm sorry?
Go on, earlier, did you hear when Mr. Scotty was speaking earlier this evening? On public comments, one, we did discuss this, that we, we have some. Shooting that's been going on on a private property that we're worried about going in on the trails, and we're, we're in litigation right now with that. We're trying to stop that from happening, so that happens, there's nothing we. Don't feel that it's safe to put everybody out, anybody out on those trails until we can feel that their safety is insured. Are you still there?
She, she's still there, she's. Because it would also be important just to be clear that we don't have a set deadline on this, this is just. And I think there might have been a little bit of misunderstanding on that, but we haven't really, we don't have like, this is going for the next several months. We're planning it by year, we don't know. It was not an easy decision. I mean, it was an easy decision in that for safety, but it was a tough decision to try and closing it down again, so. We just have to see how close.
Yeah, our goal is to open, as soon as we feel that it's safe and that we. When we feel it's safe, they'll be open. That's what we want to do. We want it to be open.
It's a tough other notice, so as soon as we have a.
So just to recap it again for me, I guess, and maybe some other people. We're checking through litigation, because there's already been. Action against them, and they're not supposed to be doing it, so where are we at with that, I guess? Are we checking into it, or?
Those are, we're talking for a session.
Okay, is there any more public comments? See anything?
I don't see any more.
Okay, thank you. With that being said, I would ask to go into executive session and make motion for that. I would let the public know that there's no action that's going to be taken after the executive session. We will come back into adjourn, but the executive session will be, there's nothing to be taken in after. So anyway, so could somebody give me a motion for going to executive session?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I think that you will read the motion.
Oh, sorry. Consideration of a motion to go into executive session pursuant to two C five. Purchase of lease, purchase or lease of real estate to the C eleven, having a probable litigation. Two C twenty-one, review closed session meetings, the opening acts. Five I L C S one twenty dash one.
That's fine. Um, wait a second. Back up. Raise, that's the second. Um, roll call.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas, yes. Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Gaten?
Yes.
Trustee Henny?
Yes, we will be going into executive session. We'll have about five, ten minutes until we all can be. Back in ourselves. All right, thank you to everyone that participated, and we'll practice soon. Motion to adjourn. Oh, we have to roll call, sorry.
Trustee Gaten?
Yeah.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
No, it's go back.